Right, good afternoon everybody and welcome to today's meeting of the Climate Emergency Advisory Committee. My name is councillor Katie Dye and I am chair in today's meeting. Can I remind everyone that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the Leeds City Council YouTube channel so that the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present. So I'm going to start with introductions from members and we'll go around the table with members and then we will introduce officers. When you have introduced yourself, can you please mute your microphone? For people who have not been to meetings in this room before, there's a button on the microphone stand thing in front of you where you can press to talk and then your light will come on and then when you've finished, if you press it again, it should go off. So let's start round this side, please.
Good afternoon, councillor John Tudor from the representing the Killinbecc and Seacroft Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Bromley, Horstforth and Rawdon Ward.
Good afternoon, Mohamed Rafiq, Chapelton Ward and Executive Board Member for Climate, Energy and Environment and Green Spaces.
Good afternoon, everyone, councillor Andy Rontree from Kirkstall Ward.
Good afternoon, everyone, councillor Hamish Shadat from the Mortanamewood Ward.
Good afternoon, everyone, councillor Penny Stables from Wetherby Ward.
Good afternoon, everybody, Norma Harrington from Wetherby Ward.
No worries, I'm used to being ignored.
Good afternoon, everybody, councillor Rick Downs, Otley and Yedden Ward.
Good afternoon councillor Barry Anderson, Adlington Ward.
Thank you, everybody, and now we will go around this way and council officers can introduce themselves, please.
Good afternoon, Polly Cook, Chief Officer, Climate, Energy and Green Spaces.
Hello, I'm Helen Gray, I'm the clerk for the committee today.
Good afternoon, Hannah Sarabert, Head of Public Health, Health Protection.
I'm Sharon Foster, Head of Public Health and Health Protection.
Afternoon, everybody, Andrew White, Senior Project Manager, Climate, Energy and Green Spaces.
Thank you, and you'll see that we have some people who are going to come and contribute to open forum when we get to that section. So if you would like to introduce yourselves too, that would be lovely.
Good afternoon, I'm Tom Schpitter from Band of Bees.
Good afternoon, I'm Paul Donie, I'm representing the Wakebeck Water Watchers.
Anne Chapman, Wakebeck Water Watchers.
Good afternoon, I'm Dr Rebecca Brunk from the University of Leeds.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's start the meeting and Helen, can you lead us through items one to five, please?
Thank you Chair, under Agenda Item Number One, there are no appeals against refusal of inspection documents. Agenda Item Two, the agenda has no exempt information in it today. Agenda Item Three, we've got no late items of business. Agenda Item Four, could I ask members to declare any interests that they may have? I'll take silence as none, thank you. Agenda Item Five, apologies for absence, we've received apologies from councillor Carlill and councillor Ray and also from Rachel Waterhouse, the policy officer. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Helen. So that leaves us on to item number six, which is minutes from the previous meeting. That starts on page seven in your agenda pack and as always, I'll go through it page by page. You can have the opportunity to make any corrections or to raise any matters arising as we go through. So first page is page seven. Page eight. So just one from me, I just want to make a public thank you to councillor Tudor and councillor Bromley because last time we didn't have anybody coming to open forum and I asked you all if you could recommend people who would like to come and it's thanks to councillor Bromley and councillor Tudor that we have people with us today, so thank you. Page nine. So I'd just like to follow on from the workshop that when we discussed the previous two workshops, we said that we were going to pick up on a number of items raised which are in the minutes at the next workshop and we have set the date for the next workshop, which is at 2pm on the 8th of December. It'll be online and Rachel will be sending out a diary invitation to you all ASAP. Okay, page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Page 13. Page 14. Page 15. Page 16. And page 17. Okay, thank you, oh, and page 18 but there's hardly anything on there, so thank you, thank you, everybody. We will agree those as a true record of the last meeting. And that brings us on to item seven, which is our open forum. So the order I have on my agenda is Horstforth first, then Wakebeck, then Band of Bees, if that's okay. You each have five minutes to make your presentation, I'm afraid there isn't time for questions but with your agreement, I'm more than happy to forward any questions to you from the committee. So if people let me know, I will pass them on to you. But also if you're happy for me to share your contact details, I'm happy to do that and then members of the committee or anybody watching can get in touch with you directly, okay? So we are starting with Rebecca then, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I'm going to be sharing some slides and talking to you about a project that we have recently funded at the University of Leeds. Great. So this is a project called Nature Neighborhoods, it's an action research project that focuses on creating community-led nature corridors in areas of Ottley, Al Woodley and Horstforth. We thought it would be interesting for the council because we have a couple of asks and also because the project aligns with a number of targets and strategies that we thought would be of interest, including the Leeds Best City Ambition, Parks and Green Spaces and the Green Infrastructure Strategies, which basically, the summary of that is by creating nature corridors, we're increasing ecological connectivity, biodiversity and habitats, as well as some co-benefits for volunteers and active travel and decreasing inequality to green spaces. For anyone who doesn't know, nature corridors pretty much do what they say but it is a corridor for nature in terms of it connects larger pieces of green space in urban areas through putting together a patchwork of smaller bits of land. So that might be through private residences or council-owned parks or little bits of highway or marginal land. And the aim of that is to create connectivity between these larger places that allow for animals and people to move through them and increase biodiversity and habitats. The before is a picture from a previous nature corridor project, nature recovery project in Ottley and then the centre photo is an after, I think it looks much nicer. And then the final photo is an example of the work that Ottley have been doing to map the habitats in their areas and the black lines that you see on that map are proposed corridors that they want to implement. For this project, we're working on creating one corridor in each area of Ottley, Al Woodley and Horstforth, which you can see here, these are their proposed corridors. The green spaces, dark green spaces are council-owned land that in order for our project to be as successful as it can be, we'd like to ask for community partnership agreements from council in order for us to be able to enact the nature recovery that we need to do on each site. All three of these are going to be wildlife corridor areas and there's a larger engagement plan going forward around getting private residences, community organisations, local businesses etc also on board for the plan for each corridor. But that's our first request is if folks in those areas could support us in this work with a community partnership agreement, that would be amazing. Second, somewhat unexpectedly, nature corridors don't do well with herbicide use and mowing. So what we'd also like to request or ask is to have herbicide use ceased and no mowing agreements in place for these corridors so that we can really see what the project might do if it's allowed to flourish in the way that would best support it. We have a number of agreements like this already in place in a variety of capacities. Ottley has already secured an agreement to pilot not using herbicides on the project's corridor and now we'd like also an agreement for no mowing with Horstforth. There's not an agreement for our corridor but there's a similar one on Drury Field Meadows. So we'd like to request both no herbicides and no mowing for our project corridor site. And similarly in Al Woodley, there's no agreement thus far and we would like to be the first in the area. Finally, to inform you and perhaps a bit of a cheeky request but the University of Leeds has committed £39,000 to support this research and community-led initiative. So if you'd like to contribute, we can make more corridors in areas. We can pilot a team Leeds approach to urban nature recovery as well through this project if you are involved. We can support community capacity to deliver biodiversity through volunteer engagement, which might also support wellbeing and climate resilience outcomes in these areas as well. And finally, through the research aspect, we can generate transferable learning partnership models which might inform future urban nature recovery projects. To discuss this further, please get in touch with me, I'm Dr Rebecca Brunk, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you so much for that and we will most definitely get in touch with you to follow up after your presentation. Super, thank you. Okay, Anne and Paul, you are next.
Okay, hi, I'm Paul Donie, as I said earlier, and Anne's with me and we're here to talk about Wakebeck Water Watchers. We're a group of residents that formed about eight months ago and we operate in the Wakebeck Valley from Eastleigh Road South through Seacroft, Gipton, Killinbecc, Hawken Moor down to the confluence with the air. Our aim really is to see the Wakebeck clean, healthy and brimming with life. So what have we been doing so far? We have started a testing process, we do some chemical testing in five places on the beck and the aim is to find out the health of the beck at that point in time of the testing. We have started some what's called riverfly testing where we identify invertebrates that are in the water and that tells us more about the long-term health of the beck. We report this data to a national, international database alongside other groups actually in North Leeds and we build a picture over time of how healthy the beck is and where there might be problems. We also walk the beck regularly, we look for problems such as pollution spills or fly tipping which we'll then report to the appropriate agency. We work with other groups, we've worked so far with Leeds University, Air Rivers Trust, Space Two, other testing groups and we've had good support from councillors in Seacroft and Killinbecc. We're trying to communicate what we're doing, we've got a Facebook page and we recently did a radio interview for Chapel FM. So what have we found out? Those that know Wakebeck know that it's a glorious, green, biodiverse corridor. The beck is in reasonable health but there are problems. First thing I really want to focus on today is the thing called misconnections and I'm going to apologise if people know this stuff but I'm going to go through it. So our properties have two water systems going from them. The surface water system that takes water from our roofs and our roads and the grey water system that takes water from things like our washing machines and our toilets. The water in the surface water system goes straight into our becs and our rivers untreated. Obviously the water in the grey water system goes off to Nostrop for treatment. Unfortunately, over time, many people, I would say many, have misconnected to the surface water system. Maybe a classic one might be they've put a washing machine into their garage, connected it to the surface water system. That means every time they use it, that is straight into the beck. Now, we know of three places in Wakebeck too which we're very focused on which are misconnected and so every day, somebody is flushing their toilet into one of them, there are washing machines going in. Now clearly over time, that does quite a serious amount of damage. It is a bigger issue than Wakebeck, you won't be surprised to know. You may have seen in the media, so in Yorkshire Evening Post recently, the Air Rivers Trust did a survey in North Leeds and identified a wide range of misconnections which was reported in the paper. Gledhow Valley Woods, the friends there managed to get an article in The Guardian identifying what damage was being done to the beck there by these misconnections as well. It's clearly a big issue but we need some help in getting some resolution to this. We have reported to appropriate people but we're not really closing the loop in understanding how it's responding. Our understanding is that the local authority has the ultimate responsibility for the surface water system and they're the ones that can enforce or follow up any issues. Yorkshire Water never used to do anything but now they are prepared to track down the actual source of these misconnections but they don't take action because it's not their system. We're struggling to join the dots and get action on the misconnections we've seen. Just moving on to the other things that we've identified, rubbish is an issue. Not so much in the green spaces in Wakebeck but close to the beck itself, often covered with undergrowth. We have an issue with oil entering the beck at one point, it seems to be quite regularly. Looks like somebody is pouring oil down one of the surface drains in a road probably, but not just once. So it seems to be a habitual thing. We look at major pollution incidents, there was one recently on Hawken Moor where the sewer main burst and Yorkshire Water were working there for some time, 24 hours a day to try and clear that up. When we tested chemically, we could see that the ammonia levels had gone sky high, almost off the scale in the dangerous zone, not surprisingly because of the sewage going in. We did report to the Environment Agency, they attended, we have made a Freedom of Information request to find out what their analysis is. Essentially, we want to know, was it, nobody could have done anything here or was it Yorkshire Water's maintenance schedule is at fault? We want to understand what's happened there. So we will advise councillors what we find out. What's going to happen next? We need to continue doing our monthly testing because we need about a year's worth, people say, in order to get that full idea of the health of the beck across time, so we'll continue doing that. In the winter, when the vegetation dies back, we want to do some clean-up days so we can clear that space alongside the beck that tends to be overlooked. We do want to improve our engagement with residents but to come back to the key one, what we really like to do is find a way of working with the council to address these misconnections and it's not just going to be Wakebeck. Really, it would be great to see some sort of project that recognises across Leeds, these things are happening on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much and we will most definitely be back in touch with you, particularly myself and councillor Tudor. I think we'd be very interested to pick that up with you and discuss it further. Thank you. Okay, so Tom, over to you.
Thank you, thank you for having us today. I'm here to talk about honeybees and the work we do across the city. So honeybees are vital to our environment and they're amazing creatures. They travel three miles in all directions, collecting nectar and pollinating as they go. They're responsible for pollinating a third of all the food we eat and a lot of the trees, green areas and habitats for other creatures also. So I'm Tom, I'm from Band of Bees and what we do is, well, we're a small company trying to make a big difference. We cite honeybee colonies at companies that want to have a positive effect to the environment and world around them. So we manage the hives throughout the year, we take people into the hives. If you work in that company, you can suit up, learn about the bees and we really educate people why they're so important. We also extract honey and give that back to the company and give bee updates, what your bees are doing, maybe threats they're facing. So bees are, you might have heard of Save the Bees but not many people know what Save the Bees maybe is. So bees are under threat from a number of things, which is climate change, the weather changing, the use of pesticides, also other creatures that are coming in from other countries, so invasive species. The latest one is the Asian hornet you might have heard of. So we're really there to protect the bees, look after the health and by companies fostering hives, where they're really helping to boost the population and help pollinate the world around us and we get a better, sort of more abundant, green areas through that. So we have a few hives across the city at the moment, we have one actually on a council site which is the Veolia Waste to Energy Facility and that's been going really well. And all the visitors there, the bees foster a real connection, so they're a real tangible thing for people to connect with. So they see the bees, they see the environment and the impact they have, they ask people questions. So it's a really attractive way to get people involved and know about what's going on around them. So I'd love to work with the council more closely and put hives in strategic areas and just look after our most important pollinator. So I'd like to play a video now if I can through Teams, I'm going to try anyway and it just brings to life what we do. Can we get sound on this by any chance?
Thank you very much.
Thank you and thank you for taking the time to come and talk to us. As I said, we will most definitely be in touch with all of you and if anybody has any specific questions that they'd like me to feed back or would like contact details, then please just get in touch with me, it's been really great to have you and I think that's three fabulous projects. So thank you very much, we will be in touch, you are free to stay or go as you wish. Thank you. Okay, so we are now on to item eight and I'm really pleased that you've brought this report to us. It's something that we've mentioned in passing really at SEAC before and we have shared the report previously with members. Obviously it's something that's really close to our hearts so it's really good that you've taken time to come to present to us today and I really do appreciate it. So you're welcome to start your presentation and then we'll have some time for questions and comments afterwards.
Thank you very much. So we've come to talk about the Director of Public Health report, Heat in the City, Our Health in a Warm in Leeds. And for those that don't know, Director of Public Health report is a statutory report, it's independent and it's up to the DPH to choose whatever they want to put a focus on health and this year it was on heat. So we can see from the bar chart, next slide.
We're going wrong already.
Yeah, sorry, we've just caught up. So we can see from the bar chart that in the last 10 years, we've had increasing temperatures in Leeds. So we've had three times many hot days and those are temperatures with 30 and over. And in 2022 and 2023, they were the warmest and second warmest on record and then in 2025, we surpassed both those years. And then in 2022, we had the highest ever recorded temperature on record and that was, I think was around the 19th of July. So for many people, they might welcome the warmer weather, it also brings significant risks to people's health. So as you can see from the graph, in July 2022, we had the highest number of daily deaths recorded during the summer and this is reversing historical trends. So we've always had our daily deaths peak in winter. So they peaked on the 19th of July, which was also the hottest day on record. And it was also the day that there was a Red Extreme weather warning issued by UKSA. So we're also very used to talking about excess winter deaths but we're starting to talk more around hot periods. And there were an estimated 2,985 excess deaths in England alone during the heatwaves of 2022. Back one. So what we did to produce the report, we discussed the issue with professionals, Leeds City Council professionals in particular, housing, climate, energy. We also discussed it with broader professionals and clinicians, academics at the university and UKSA, which is the United Kingdom Health Security Agency, formerly known as Public Health England, they have a climate cell too. We also did engagement and interviews with residents from high-rise properties, children's centres, care home residents and people with long-term conditions. And we also looked at all the reviewed, the local and national evidence, policy and data. And we also produced a film which we'll show at the end of the presentation.
Can you just say something about the research?
Yes, I can go into more detail but I think one of the things that we have seen since writing the report is how many opportunities it's opened up in terms of working with academic partners, other colleagues within the council. There's been some significant conversations about new research proposals where we work with colleagues across academic institutions, colleagues from planning, colleagues from Polly's team, you know, to look at the art of the possible of working together to improve community resilience around heat. I'm really delighted as well to say that based on the report, the University of Leeds bid for some new research monies from the National Institute of Health Research to
work with care homes to identify challenges that care homes have in keeping their residents cool during hot periods. And they were successful, you know, with support from our team and with the recommendations within the DPH report in securing that money. It's a national piece of research that Leeds will be at the forefront of and local Leeds care homes will really benefit from. So that starts in the next two weeks, which is great. So what did people tell us from the community? So those living in high-rise blocks, some of them were absolutely boiling during the summer where the other half of the building were freezing. It exacerbated long-term conditions. It impacted on people's mood and sleep. And accessing public green spaces can be a challenge. For some, even just walking up the hill to the park was difficult. Or they had nice little areas outside their high-rise flats and then they'd be vandalised and the benches would go and they had nowhere to go. Or the parks had antisocial behaviour and they didn't feel safe. So what professionals told us, that they call for more spaces being available, similar to warm spaces but cool spaces. Hydration was a key concern, affected people across from children's centres to care elderly homes. Professionals see people raising concerns about cooling costs. And those people caring for people with long-term conditions noticed that hot weather made them worse and they had an increased need for support. And poor air quality caused by higher temperature also affected people with respiratory conditions. Thank you. So just to say that we know that, you know, anybody can be impacted by increasing temperatures caused by climate change, but we know from the data and from speaking to people that there are some people within our communities that are more at risk because of their personal or social circumstances. So we know, for example, that older people, especially those over the age of 65, people with long-term health conditions, children, babies and pregnant women, and people living in densely populated, deprived urban areas are more at risk from the harms of heat on health than the general population. And, you know, within Leeds, we're a, we have diverse communities. We know from working with colleagues that we have 61,000 people that are registered on the priority services register as vulnerable. We know that two in five people within Leeds GP data are registered with at least one long-term health condition. We have over 150 care homes within the cities and with over 3,500 people receiving home care, domiciliary care. We also know that more than half of the people aged 50 and over in Leeds live with at least two or more long-term health conditions. So when we think about all of those extra additional vulnerabilities, we know that as well as working with general population, we've also got to target our resources at those people most at risk as well. And as Sharon said, we know that some buildings are more prone to overheating. So your experience of heat and overheating will very much depend, or can very much depend on the type of house that you're living in. Some properties struggle to retain heat during the wintertime. And it can be really difficult for people, especially in low-income households, to afford the necessary adaptations needed to cool their homes. So we talk a lot about poverty around heating homes. But, you know, what we also know is that with increasing temperatures and increasing heat and overheating within buildings, if we're solely relying on mechanical cooling systems, then that is going to also impact in the same way on fuel poverty. So again, it's starting to think about some of the things we really put a lot of focus on during winter months in the same, but we need to think about that during summer months. And I know certainly, I know I recognise people around the table that we've presented, this is probably the third time you've heard this presentation, but we came to, we came to present at scrutiny, Adults and Health Scrutiny, and we also came to present our winter preparedness at scrutiny about three weeks ago. And actually, there was a great comment from an elected member about, are you going to come back and present on preparedness around summer health in the same way that you do for winter health? And I think these are the sorts of things that we need to start to consider. So one of the things that we know has a real impact for the city of Leeds is that urban heat island effect. So obviously, cities are built from man-made materials. We have a lot of concrete, a lot of asphalt, potentially less green spaces, although obviously that is increasing at the moment. And we know that these are all, all these man-made materials can actually hold heat. So we know that from working with colleagues at the University of Leeds who have done heat mapping and from working with colleagues at the Met Office, that actually our most densely populated urban areas can be up to eight degrees hotter during extreme heat events than our more rural areas. So some of you will already know that the Met Office weather gauge is based in Bramham, which is obviously a more green, I won't say rural, but leafy area. But actually, we know that that is not representative of some of our inner-city hottest temperatures during heatwaves. And so, I've just had a slide. So again, a really important piece of data that illustrates this is the vulnerabilities map. So we, working with colleagues from the University of Leeds and also Leeds Beckett University, were able to look at some vulnerability mapping, which looked at average temperatures within ward, award level data rather than the city average. Were able to look at number of people living with multiple health conditions, age, IMD. And that created this vulnerability score in terms of heat and hot weather. And we can see here that our most deprived inner-city areas, which are the darkest red, are the most vulnerable when we're looking at the, according to that tool, in terms of the impacts of heat on health. This is a tool that was produced at a point in time. It's not something that's been replicated since, but certainly something we think would be really useful going forwards to be able to have a live data stream on and something that we're working with colleagues around the council and at Leeds University to look at how we can make this a more up-to-date, ongoing piece of data that we can use. So as well as the direct impacts of heat, like heat stroke, heat exhaustion, we also know that increasing temperatures are bringing new and emerging risks. So things like vector-borne diseases. So we know that certain vector insects such as mosquitoes and ticks, now because of increased temperatures, actually can have longer breeding seasons and are more likely to be able to survive in our warmer weathers. So for example, a piece of work that we're doing, we're involved with the UK Health Security Agency, is around mosquito trapping at ports. So something that we've never had to think about before, but now something that's happening around, across the country. It's not just in Leeds, but to sample mosquitoes that are being trapped, that are coming in through our ports to look at what diseases they carry. And obviously, we know that mosquitoes pose a risk for things like malaria. But also ticks, you know, as an urban local authority, we, and as a health protection team, we have kind of had a more of a light-touch approach around raising awareness of ticks and tick bites and Lyme's disease, because that's something that more, that occurs more in rural areas. But we know that as an urban city, we're getting more cases of ticks and tick bites. So we need to raise awareness. So again, you know, as a result of looking at those ticks maps and recommendations within the report, one of the things we're carrying forward as a health protection team and as a local authority is an increased push this year and next year on increasing public awareness of ticks and what to do if you think that you've been bitten by a tick. Actually, I'll just go back because I have forgotten one thing. The other thing to consider is era allergens. So we know that with increased heat come the increased risk of storms and thunder, which can cause a phenomenon called thunderstorm asthma. So we know that during thunderstorms, there is a release of particulate matter and era allergens, which can actually trigger in some people. And it's often in younger children and people with existing respiratory illness can trigger something called thunderstorm asthma. So again, that's a new phenomenon that we're starting to talk about more as a health protection team with colleagues from UK Health Security Agency and something that's been recognised in national reports around raising awareness within primary care and also within the general public around thunderstorm asthma. So key findings within the reports. Right, you know, temperatures are rising within Leeds. So I think that the first barcode, as we call it, you know, illustrates that visually very well. So that is every single year, that average temperature has been collected from 1881 and we can see that the average temperature year on year is increasing. We can see from our data, from our national data, that heat is impacting on hospital admissions and mortality rates, but also on people seeking support for, within primary care. And it's not just direct impacts of heat. So it's not, people aren't just being admitted to hospital or seeking medical interventions around heat stroke and heat exhaustion. It's things like increased accidents. And we know that we have a culture of people going out, enjoying the sunshine and drinking. And, you know, that is also increasing hospital admissions because of risk-taking and also accidents. So that's something to be mindful of. We know that the impacts of heat, as we've described, are unequal in terms of certain communities. And we know that housing and the type of housing that you live in can exacerbate your vulnerability. We also know that heat and increasing temperatures are also causing emerging risks like vector-borne diseases and increased era allergens. And one of the things that we've been really keen to demonstrate is that there's the cumulative impact of vulnerable risk factors. So if you are an older person living with multiple health conditions in an IMD1 area in a high-rise block of flats facing the south, then you, your cumulative vulnerability will be much greater than other people's. Oh, sorry. It's all right. So we have, and I'm not going to go through each and every recommendation, but Victoria, as our Director of Public Health, has pulled together nine key recommendations. And these are recommendations for the city. So these have been signed off by Executive Board and CLT. And they are, it's really a challenge for us, our system partners, to look at what we can do to ensure that heat is considered in all of our, all of the things that we have any involvement in. So it ranges from, as Sharon has said, the exploration and implementation of cool spaces. We know that we have a very successful welcome spaces scheme in Leeds, but actually, we don't have any formal cool spaces initiative. So that's something that we're really keen to explore, as other cities have next year and already are doing so alongside rehydration stations and encouraging businesses to sign up to water refill schemes, of which we, again, have one in Leeds already, but I'm not sure how well-known it is or how well-promoted. We're also working alongside colleagues from our planning team to look at how we can use, if we had more ward-level data around heat, whether we could look at implementing that within our planning recommendations. So at the moment, my understanding is that we use citywide heat data for any planning applications. But as we've explored, sometimes that might not be representative of our most urban areas. So looking at how we can improve our data to actually improve recommendations within planning. We're working with colleagues from Climate Energy Green Spaces team to look at how we can use brilliant initiatives like green spaces and obviously all of the work going on around increasing urban green spaces, but how we can do more around shelter and learning from other hot countries. And we, and obviously the most important, or one of the most important things is continuing to engage with communities around the impacts of heat on health. And, you know, we're very much interested in, we've done a lot of work with Climate Action Leeds and they were involved in bringing people together to represent their views within the report. But we need to continue to find ways within public health and across the council to engage with communities, raise awareness, but also seek views on how to, what the, some of the, some of the solutions really. So hopefully, and if we have time, we're going to finish with a video, although after the last video, I'm not feeling as hopeful, so. Is that a double, sorry, is that a double? Can people hear that? Okay, okay, right, I'll continue.
In this heat, it's hard to stay comfortable. It can be depressing when you're stuck in your flat. I do have my fan and water in the fridge, so I can still try my best to look after myself and keep hydrated. Small walks help, but not everyone here can do that. Having a comfortable outdoor space would make a big difference, a little spot we can all share.
There are great green spaces in Leeds if you can travel.
There are great green spaces in Leeds if you can travel. It's a lifeline for my kids, but even here, we have to work to stay cool. I try to find a breeze and remind my son to drink enough water. In the heat, I feel so tired, my mood is low, but what can I do? I work, I'm a mom, I can change my routine. Climate change is coming fast, but I want to do what I can. We try to make small changes, reducing waste, cutting energy use, because this is the future where my kids will grow up.
The heat affects everyone. The children who never used to nap during the day, they need to sleep and parents feel completely worn out. As our outdoor area gets too hot, we adjust activities, take extra water breaks and help families find ways to stay cool. We also advise parents not to put blankets over the buggies as this can create heat traps. Not every family can afford day trips to escape the heat, so we organise group outings to make sure all children get the chance to enjoy fresh air and space to play. We also do things like refer families to clothing banks for summer clothes.
I volunteer at charity and we see how much of a space like this really matters when it gets hot. Some people don't have anywhere cool to go, so having places like this where they can get out of the heat, have a drink and make friends and just feel comfortable is really important. We're doing small things that make a difference. We planted 18 trees last week, which will provide fruit but also cool the environment. It's about looking out for each other. But it's not just here. Projects and spaces across Leeds are making a difference. If more spaces like this existed across the city, it would help so many people. It's not just about now, it's making sure that Leeds is ready for the future.
When it's hot, I feel lethargic, but I've always known to drink more water and stay in the shade. The staff here are fantastic. They check on us, bring us extra drinks and do what they can to keep us comfortable, even though it can be difficult to keep the rooms cool. Summers used to be hot, then they'd cooled down, but now it feels more extreme. It makes you think about what's coming next, especially to my grandchildren. But I try not to worry too much. We've always found ways to adapt and we'll continue doing that.
As temperatures rise.
Cities like Leeds, there's unique challenges.
Each of us has a part to play.
Through small actions and shared effort.
We can build a more resilient future for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing the video. Thank you for bringing that report to us. It's really, really important work and clearly resonates very much with a lot of the things that we talk about. In terms of moving now to questions, if you look at your pack, you'll see that we have two recommendations for this item. One is to endorse the report and the other is to explore opportunities for citywide collaboration to achieve the recommendations, which you've just seen on screen there. So it will be great if questions that you've got can relate to them. It'd be good to hear what you've got to say in terms of the recommendation as well as just general questions. Thank you. So I think councillor Bromley was first.
Thank you and hello again. I've always not asked the same questions. In terms of, previously there was a discussion around children in schools too. So I just wondered, I'm not sure if that was, Victoria was mentioning that there was some focus work and it was especially around sort of drinking more water when it's more hot and how that might relate just to toilet visits or to uniform and just general procedures and rules in schools around that. I just wondered if that was something that you'd be able to add.
Hi. Yeah, I think, you know, that was certainly something very pertinent that we talked about when we came to scrutiny, that often, you know, we have, we have guidance from organisations such as, you know, Department of Health and Social Care and UK Health Security Agency on how we should adapt to keep people healthy during heat. But that sometimes because of policy, it can be hard to actually initiate. So schools was one of the areas that we explored. So we know that we want people generally to drink more water, but we also know that schools have quite, especially high schools, have quite strict policies on using toilets in between, you know, well, during school time drinking. So I think, you know, absolutely, we are working as much as we can with our children and families colleagues to explore that. But ultimately, I guess it's working with, with schools and head teachers and our schools' health and wellbeing team to promote it so that they take it on. So any, any support that any, anyone or elected members can give to sort of promote those messages and make sure it's taken seriously within schools would be really appreciated.
Thank you. Did you want to come back on that? Yes, please.
Certainly, I'll make sure to mention it. And also in terms of the video, is that possible to share? It's so powerful. It'd be really great to have that as a education.
Yeah, absolutely. Everything is uploaded onto the Leeds Observatory, but we can certainly share all of the links with, with members after this meeting, no problem.
Thank you, that'd be lovely, thank you. Okay. Right, councillor Ontry is next.
Thank you, Chair. May I put two questions? Okay, thanks. Right, thanks very much for the presentation. The first thing that occurred to me was talking about building design and liaison with planning and trying to import into the planning process. Now, I was just thinking that obviously thermal efficiency and heat not getting out has been like a little consideration for some time. This is a lot newer, isn't it? Is it the case that you're right at the beginning of the journey now? Do you think you need any legislative change in order to make this happen? Is it something you think you can work with planning on as things exist at the moment?
All right, I'm going to both speak. I think we do, we do have someone in public health that liaises with planning, but it's in and, but there's lots of buildings where they're doing, they're trying to make them more thermal efficient, but looking at the temperatures as the inner city versus, I think, we're relatively at the beginning of that one.
Right, so you think there's like a sort of scope for conversations with parliamentarians to get, to get a lead on this perhaps?
I think, I think one, certainly we're, we are at the beginning of this journey and, you know, we've, we've already had some really productive conversations with colleagues from the planning team. And, you know, this is about us understanding what the current lay of the land is and what, what could be possible if we were ambitious. And it's also about, you know, I guess we are a small public health, health protection team, so it's how we can influence others to think about heat and the recommendations within their own areas of work. But yeah, certainly working with planning and looking at the council's own housing stock, that's, there's some really interesting conversations happening. I think one of the recommendations is around lobbying national government to make, to enhance what private landlords are required to, to do in terms of thermal efficiency and adaptations, which from speaking to colleagues who oversee the private rental market, I think is, is more challenging from a, from the perspective of national policy and what they can enforce.
Okay, thank you. And my second one, I'm just wondering, what can we learn from abroad, from places that see as normal, the kind of temperatures that we're now finding as oppressive? Should we be working later into the evening and taking a siesta, that kind of thing?
Maybe. Yeah, I think, so one of the, one of the possible research projects that we have submitted a bid, well, the University of Leeds have submitted a bid for is some research called Urban Call, which would essentially see Leeds join a collective of six other European cities to, to learn from each other in terms of heat adaptation. And you're right, you know, I think we're, we're not very well, well, our infrastructure doesn't support heat and overheating at the moment. And, and I think there's a lot that we can learn from other countries. So, you know, if, if successful, I think that that would, would provide a lot of new avenues for innovation and trial. But yes.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I'm hoping that we could have something imaginative here rather than turning on loads of air con and consuming resources of energy, but thanks very much.
And, and just to say that it's very much about having alternatives to mechanical cooling, you know, and using innovation around, you know, even the colours that buildings are painted in or kind of roofing and things like that, as well as mechanical cooling. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Downs.
Thanks, I've got a few if I may. First of all, you mentioned about ticks. I represent a ward which is in the perhaps cooler area of Leeds. And I also, I also run a business which does outdoor running. And we, on our website, we have advice about ticks and have done for a number of years after one of our runners, not one, not with us at the time, but they contracted Lyme's disease and I didn't realise just how horrific it can be. And you said that you were mapping ticks and it would be useful to see a copy of that map so that we can see the spread of ticks within our area. But also the question within that is how can we further make public aware of it? I know there is some public awareness within the field that I'm in, but is it out there for general people? And for example, how prevalent is it on somewhere like the Shevin, which is in my ward? And how much do we need to inform residents? That's number one. Number two, we were talking, councillor Ontry was mentioning about planning and that and the new, new properties coming on. And you talked about non-mechanical methods of cooling. One of the things I think about is that I've got solar panels. During the summer, I'm overproducing and selling back to the grid. But with that additional power generation of solar panels, that potentially could be then converted into air conditioning units, which then could be run carbon neutral without massive costs. So if we've got solar panels on more buildings, we can use that to cool buildings. So that's another thought I've just had whilst listening. And then the third one is water. You were saying about the consumption of water. This year has been a really bad year for drought and we're advised not to use hosepipes and there's still a hosepipe ban. When you're trying to grow your own fruit and veg and also your pollinators for bees and you can't sort of go and water them as much as you'd like, as things get worse and we get warmer, there's going to be more and more demand for that water. And is it something that we need to do in conjunction with Yorkshire Water to make sure that we either store more water or convert more water, you know, sort of, I know you can't produce water, but you can be more constructive with it. I mean, I live near the Darnley Arms and for months, water was pouring out of the junction there and you keep telling Yorkshire Water about their leakages. And I think something needs to be done to make sure that we've got the water that our society is going to need moving forward. Thank you, Chair.
Going to do the ticks. So yeah, we do do a lot of resources for ticks and we're trying to work across outdoor workers, occupational health departments to raise the profile. So if you've got any organisations, I mean, it's great that you've got it on your website, any organisations that you think we need to get the resources out to, that would be brilliant. And then in terms of mapping ticks, the United Kingdom Health Security Agency are asking anybody that has a tick to stick it on Salatairpa and send it to them because they want to test and map them. And then you've written the other questions down.
And just to say that, yeah, we, we can certainly share the link for tick mapping that is, as Sharon says, produced by the UK Health Security Agency. I think, you know, in terms of public awareness, we have existing resources that are available from the Public Health Resource Centre. We have done sort of internal and public facing campaigns. But next year, we're just in the process of planning and organising stock for banners and kind of corex boards in all of our green spaces across Leeds. So that spans from the large parks to woodland areas too. So this is all about, you know, increasing public awareness, but also knowing how people can play their part in having a, nationally having a better understanding of tick and Lyme's disease patterns, which as you say, is a really horrendous disease. In terms of water use, I think, again, really our role within public health and health protection is around raising public awareness of these increasing threats and kind of the knock-on effects that people will start to have to deal with more, more often as, as we get those increases in, in heat waves and hotter weather. I suppose as a, as a system, as, as local partners, it's understanding what conversations are already happening with colleagues from places like Yorkshire Water and colleagues across the council to make sure that heat is considered wherever we're having a conversation around water or indeed any kind of related subject. Because I think often it's maybe not an issue that is, is talked about as regularly as other areas. Yeah, I mean, again, I suppose it's, it's around working with, I, I would look to my colleagues from sort of Climate Energy Green Spaces teams and, and other, you know, more expert departments to look at, you know, what, what is already available in terms of investment in solar and how that could be used. I know obviously you've mentioned solar panels and being able to bank in batteries, you know, any kind of energy that's produced that's not used directly. But again, it's about us working with, with colleagues that have more of an expert eye and have a view of those areas of work.
I was just merely flagging it up as a possibility for some research to try and perhaps forward that because I think as time goes on, we're going to be more and more reliant on, more and more reliant on renewable energy. That can be one of the ways to combat the climate change, or at least not combat it, to make it more livable.
And I think just a final response to that is that there seems to be an ever increasing number of research opportunities. And certainly our colleagues from the University of Leeds and Leeds Beckett University have been very keen to explore any areas that are of interest. So I think if you, it is an area that you would like to explore or look at what the potential funding sources are, it might be worth a conversation as well, or we can look at that.
Thank you. Councillor Stables.
Thank you. Yeah, just a few questions. So in terms of water, and really obvious one seems to me, to have water fountains everywhere. And it's not something that we do well, I don't think, as a city. If you go abroad, there's far more water, you know, most towns, almost every village has got its own water fountain. And it's just, I, it seems to me such an obvious thing to do. So, you know, and perhaps again, we can tie that in with planning. So when there are large new developments that are putting in planning applications, you know, why not, why don't we specify there needs to be within that green space a water fountain? Just for, you know, when kids are playing outside, when it's hot or whatever, there's that access, ready access to water is just so important, rather than relying on refill places that not everyone knows, as you said, where they are. And I think that would be really good. And, you know, some schools have them, I don't know if all schools even have them. When I was at school, all schools seemed to have them. I don't know if they do anymore, but it seems an obvious thing to do. In terms of education, one of the things that I think would be really good to include in the education, which is a kind of counterintuitive thing, that when it's very hot, it's important to close windows. Because majority, a lot of people still don't get, don't understand that. And so you see windows wide open when it's, when we're having a heat wave and all that's doing is bringing that heat, actually bringing the temperature up in the house, not reducing it. So I think that should be part of the education as well about, you know, as soon as, you know, you get up, you keep the curtains closed and you shut the, you know, as soon as it gets warm, you shut the windows, but open them at night. So that way we keep, we're keeping homes as cool as possible and not having to move to the reliance on air conditioning that a lot of other countries use. Obviously in order to save energy and reduce our carbon, reduce the amount of carbon we're using. You mentioned about cool spaces and, and on the, the video actually, it mentioned about churches and certainly that And certainly that where we are in Boston Spa, our local church, it's a really big old church, was incredibly cool. And we, that was advertised as a cool space in the village. And it just seems a really good opportunity to reach out to churches across the city, where, you know, generally beforehand, but also if we're approaching a heatwave, would you consider opening those spaces as a cool space? It's like something we have already, that using that would be really good. There was one more. No, that was it. Thank you.
Hi, just with the water fountains, I think that's a, that would be a cost issue. If we could make sure that people knew where they could refill, that might be a cheaper alternative. But they, you know, we're not the experts on how we can roll it out. These are just, you know, your suggestions are the same as ours. The top tips of closing windows and curtains, there's a kind of fat top tips that we've got on the website that people can have. It's always just making sure people get this information and as councillors, that would be great if you could post it on anything. And the cool spaces, we are working on. There is some, there is a kind of a, what defines a cool space? Can you get water? How cool does a cool space have to be? If a church opens its doors, who's going to be in there? So, yeah, we are working on that. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, just to add, I, you know, I agree that many, many people still just open windows, you know, during the, because it's, I guess it's human nature to want to get some kind of breeze in. And we have already do a lot of promotion, especially with our home care providers, that when they're visiting very vulnerable people where they might only have that one visit a day, that they're going through sort of checks and balances with people and trying to raise awareness of what they can do with the, maybe the limited resources that they have to actually try and cool their space to the best ability, including not opening windows during the hottest periods of the day. Cool spaces, we are starting with our libraries and community hubs, hopefully next year, with a view to looking at whether we could also then, you know, expand that to other places like churches, places of worship, which we know are trusted venues within the community and often cooler because of their build as well. But as Sharon says, you know, we, we need to make sure that the buildings that we are promoting can actually meet the criteria in terms of physically cooling their buildings. And probably opening up longer hours so that people can travel to them in the cooler hours of the day as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Harrington.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree with what all of my colleagues have said so far. But the one thing, can we have some more information about the water refill schemes? What has actually been done previously? I know there was, a couple of years ago, we had something that they were asking if shops could maybe put a sticker on the window to say that you could refill your water bottle there, but that seems to have disappeared. So it's how are we going to reinvigorate that? Thank you.
Yes, and just to say, we are exploring that at the moment, trying to find which team it was that was, that ran that promotion. I know that there is an existing scheme, as you say, that encourage businesses to promote the fact that they, people could walk in and refill their water bottles. I think our challenge next year alongside the cool spaces is to increase public awareness of all of these schemes and make sure that you have the resources to promote that as well.
Thank you. Councillor Tudor.
I was interested when you said about looking to get more local heat data as opposed to citywide heat data. And I just wondered if you could say a couple of more sentences about what that might look like and how that might, might happen in terms of planning and so on. But, and then secondly, sort of looking at heat in the city in its very widest sense, sort of an adjacent question. That, as was mentioned earlier, it was very, very dry in the early summer. There were 22 days with no rain and West Yorkshire Fire Service reported there were three times as many outdoor fires as there were in the same period last year. So as you say, this data goes one way, it's only going to get hotter and hotter in the city, the city in its broadest sense. So are there any plans to sort of work more closely with the fire service about planning for that?
Yes, to take your first question around heat mapping and heat data. At the moment, we use Met Office heat data, which is from that one weather station. But what we know would be possible is to have more local heat sensors as part of the Sensing Leeds scheme. So again, that would need investment and that, you know, we know from other sensors and schemes that we have in Leeds, like the air quality sensors, that that is possible. But at the moment, additional sensors to look at heat, to my, to the best of my knowledge, are not available. But we are working with a colleague called Jim Parker from Leeds Beckett University, who I know other colleagues have worked very closely with to look at what we could do collectively to ensure that those additional sensors that were made available and invested in so that we had more up-to-date ward level mapping, which would then allow us and other organisations to use that data to better steer our policies and decision-making. In terms of heatwaves and increased risk of fires and obviously wildfires, you know, we are, as a local authority, obviously we are part of the Local Resilience Forum who oversee emergency response around things like heatwaves and heat planning. So certainly last year, there was a West Yorkshire exercise around responding to local heatwaves and wildfires. And part of that was around where water could be taken from to extinguish, you know, wildfires on moors and Chevins, et cetera. So that is something that is our resilience and emergencies team lead on and are very well exercised in. And we have kind of local plans for that. But that is, as you say, with increasing heat and rising temperatures, that is an increasing risk as well.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? Councillor Stables.
It was just to come back on the, you're talking about the refill. There's an app called Refill Return that I've got, which shows, which you can then put in. It will then show you where the nearest refill places are. So just thought it might be useful.
Thank you. And I know that one of our colleagues in our team has recently been working with the communities team and Lee Helmsworth's team to look at a scheme. So whatever information we have, we can promote to members as well. But it's interesting to know about that website, which sounds slightly different, I think, to the one that we've had sites of. Right, great, thank you.
Thank you. So I don't see any more people wanting to come up with questions. So can I just come in with some of mine then, just to finish this item off, please? So the first one was about cool spaces, which we've discussed already. But I was just wondering, is there going to be a map produced in the same way as was produced for the warm spaces when that was started? And if so, is, is there any way we can help share that? The second one was about Recommendation Three, which talks about the development of a citywide action plan. So I wondered if you had any more detail about the time scale for that? And is there anything that we can do as a committee to feed into that and help with that? The next one was about Recommendation Four. So you talked quite a lot really about the work that's being done with academic partners, which is great because that's pulling together expertise across the city, isn't it? And the more people we have feeding into that, the better. And I know you talked about the climate vulnerability mapping, which has come from, has that come from Power at Leeds Uni? And you also mentioned Jim Parkery heat sensors. I think it would be great for us to have a much better sense of where it really is hot in the city that allows us to do some better planning. And I wondered, seeing as you are linked in with that work, whether you're linked into a workshop that's coming up that is looking at specifically Hair Hills? And it's a joint project between Leeds Beckett and UCL. And they're looking for people to attend a workshop, which will possibly be in early December. And I'm opening an invitation to yourselves and to any committee members if you'd like to come along to that. I think that would be quite nice for us to all be able to feed into that. And then two more. One of them is, we've talked a lot about planning and we've talked a lot about planning at several CACs and how, you know, we can probably, as a city, have more of an impact in, well, today we talked about ward-specific heat data, in the past we've talked about BNG. So I wondered whether there's something that we as a committee can recommend in terms of plans panel training to look at doing a better job so that when applications come to us, we can look at specifically heat and in a previous CAC BNG. So I don't know whether that's something, that's something maybe for us to look at. And then my last one was in Recommendation Nine. It mentioned training and you yourselves mentioned training earlier on. And I wondered whether you were linked in with the Yorkshire and Humber Climate Commission's Weather Narratives, PAMs story project. It's a really nice, human kind of bit of training. And it's freely available and might be worth looking at if you're not. That's it. That's mine done.
I feel, well, in response to your last question, no, we're not aware of that training. And if you have any contacts, it would be really interesting to link with them and look at whether we could, if there was any collaboration that we could link in with. So thank you. In terms of, let me start, I'll start from the very beginning. So I don't think either Sharon or I are aware of the Hair Hills meeting, but that's not to say that someone within our public health team might not be. So I know we have colleagues that work within Hair Hills and we have colleagues that lead on things like the Marmot City approach. So, but we will certainly take that back and make sure that there is representation there. But we'd be really interested to have some more details to be able to do that. The action plan, we have pulled together, in terms of the recommendations and made sure that we've got kind of key links and leads, that some of those links are within council teams and directories. Some are with external partners and we can certainly, happy to share sort of updates on that action plan. We have passed over the baton to the next public health team who are currently writing the next DPH report for 2026. And as part of the next report, there is an action for us to report on a 12-month update, which actually will be sooner than 12 months on work from the previous DPH report. So we will be providing, in effect, an action plan update within the next DPH report as well. But more than happy to keep you updated as members on action and to come to you for any support with, you know, challenges that we're facing around those recommendations as well. The mapping, yeah, sorry, I've written map down. That's not very helpful.
I think, was that about cool spaces?
Yes, it was. Yes, absolutely. There will be, there will be a map, you know, we need to promote that. And, you know, we need to, we will obviously promote that through local council social media channels and channels available to us. But we're really aware as well that we need to support that within communities, sorry, promote that within communities through elected members, but also through our third sector colleagues and trusted organisations as well. So, yeah, but we will make sure that wherever cool spaces exist, they're as well promoted as they can be.
Brilliant, thank you. So I think we've got lots to go away and think about in terms of actions from that item. So, you know, we've got a number from yourselves and a number for us, which I'll make sure are captured in the minutes. And then we can all go ahead and do all the things that we promised that we would do. So thank you very much. Really appreciate that. Thank you for coming. Thank you for that item. And thank you for the report. We really appreciate that as well. Okay, so you are free to go and we are on to item nine, which is the anchors network. So Andrew, you've introduced yourself, but Amy, you might like to do an introduction before you start and then just feel free to start the item.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, councillors. My name's Amy Bezwick. I'm part of the economic policy team in City Development Directorate and my role is as the anchor manager. So I support Leeds Anchor Network across its various work streams.
Thanks, Amy. And I'm just trying smoothly to sort out the technology for the presentation. I'm really sorry, we haven't got a video. So it's just half a dozen slides taking you through what we've been doing over the last six months. It's actually 12 months almost to the week since you heard an update from two of the Leeds anchors. What we're going to do today is just give you a bit of a wider context to how the anchors have arrived and particularly a refresh over this summer. And we'll take you into some more details. And I think particularly for the questions you might have about the anchors framework and the corporate conversation. We'll probably invite questions before you need to go around four o'clock, Amy. Is that okay? I'll try and get the presentation up. Great. Okay, so it's a comparatively brief set of slides. But it's an update on what you heard last month. Also, we collaborated on the slides. I've also included Rachel's name on that. So Rachel wrote the covering report as well, which is very much a step forward from the presentation that you had November, December last year. So this is what we're going to go through. So just background to the Leeds Anchors Network. There's been a refresh, we've got revised agreement, sort of partnership approach. And then we'll go straight into then the shared areas of working around the climate subgroup and particularly the work that is still ongoing. So I've actually got a meeting about one of the two themes. I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on later this week and then an update again with the chair of the climate subgroup later this month as well. And it might well be we can share more information then when they've reached a point of maturity that we can share. Okay. Yeah, so just overall, so Leeds Anchors Network, I'm not sure we covered this last time, but just that background on the anchors. There's 14 anchors. I think there were 15 last time. Amy knows which of the anchors is no longer in the group and we'll see if that's obvious from the presentations. So we've got 14 members across local government, health, culture, education and utilities. We've got a refreshed partnership agreement and the focus is very much on shared areas of working across those themes. You won't see climate specifically in those themes. Climate sits very closely to that environment and assets theme. Before we go into the detail, anything else that you'd like to add, Amy, in terms of the framework?
Yeah, I suppose just as a little bit of background and context, the Anchor Network in Leeds has been going since 2018, which was around the time of the first inclusive growth strategy in Leeds. And the origins of this were really us looking into how do we deliver inclusive growth within the city? And how do we pull the levers of some of those large organisations that are very rooted in place? They are invested in the development of their local area. They have a reason to see that local place thrive. So Leeds has been sort of working on kind of anchor institutions and anchor networks for some time. As Andrew said, you know, that has developed. We've grown the network over time and now have these 14 members. And each of these organisations, as part of their commitment to being a local anchor organisation, they go through a framework, a structured framework that sets out some of those ways that they can use their organisational levers, their business practices to deliver local impact. And you can see them on the slides that this is around their role as being good employers, recruiting locally, embedding good employment practice, spending within the city where they can do and supporting the development of local supply chains through their procurement and purchasing decisions. The way they think about their buildings and their estates, which incorporates their climate emergency response and their climate policies. And then the way they deliver their services and the partnerships they form with others in the city. So it's a very comprehensive framework. Each of the organisation goes through that every two to three years. That's been recently completed by all of the organisations. And we have put together a bit of a partnership report that was published around the time of the Leeds ambitions, which showcases some of that work.
We both, I'd like to be on at the same time, but they might be able to. I provided a link in the slides. It may not come out when I send them over to your chair. So I'll provide it again in the covering email as well. So you can see the full covering report. Part of the next couple of slides are selections from that report from the Leeds Anchors. Well, I feel very, I want to be quite careful that we're talking about the good work that is going on across the city without those people being in the room. And I think one of the next themes might be, who do you want to hear from next? Which organisations are you really interested in what's going on? And particularly there, if there's reports that are coming back from the different working groups or from the Chair there. We've got really close working relationship there. Amy and I have been attending the Climate Subgroup and we're involved in other, you know, other groups that are one step away from that Leeds Anchors Network. But just to reiterate, the shared capacity that these institutions have, organisations have across the city is enormous. Their reach is far beyond Leeds as well. If you think about Northern Power Grid or Northern Gas Networks, they might have their HQs in the city, but their reach is across Yorkshire as well. This data is just over a year old, but you know, over half a billion pounds of influenceable spend, influenceable spend spent in Leeds and more than another half a billion pounds spent in West Yorkshire. And particularly there, one of the themes of what we've been looking at there has been the overlap between the Climate Subgroup and the Procurement Subgroup as well. And we've got some shared interest in really understanding that spend and seeing what we can do to make that spend work harder in terms of reducing emissions. 110,000 tonnes of reduced CO2 emissions over the past four years will be primarily Scope One and Scope Two emissions. That's the buildings, that's the fleet and that's the energy, the CO2 linked to the energy use over those buildings. We want over the next two or three years, particularly to really get into the Scope Three emissions. We suspect they'll be larger than the Scope One and Scope Two emissions and to make those improvements as well as continuing the Scope One and Scope Two emissions. Okay, I'm just keeping the list of anchors up there as well, so I want to make sure that it's not seen as something that the council's doing. So apologies for that if that becomes repetitive. So again, the five main areas of focus, employment, procurement, environment and assets. Climate sits next door to that. Service delivery, corporate and civic behaviours. I've just included, and it's just a screenshot, the scores around best practice towards that network level improvement. And you'll see there that the two areas that are still the weakest out of those five areas are procurement and environment and assets. And so again, I think it makes sense then that the improvement plans include work on those two areas as well. I don't know the full details about why we're scoring in that way. And again, Amy, if there's a question on that, I'm going to pass over to Amy to answer that. Or do you want to provide a bit more information?
Can I just butt in and ask it now, seeing as you've got the slide there? Is that across all the 14 anchors, that data?
Yes, that's right. So just to explain a little bit around the scoring, this is a self-assessment process that each of the anchors undertake. They do it every two to three years. The purpose of that is to be able to benchmark their progress against those themes that we set out as the kind of hallmarks of being a local anchor institution. So it's not sort of independently accredited in any way. There is a bit of sense checking with that. There is a bit of benchmarking across the network to make sure that those scores make sense. But a lot, the purpose of the progression framework is to support those internal reflections and conversations within organisations about the impact that they have for the city, the impact that they have across their environmental policies and practice. What that, so the scores are at a network level. What that doesn't show is the kind of range and variation that there is across anchor organisations with some being very close to best practice in some areas where a score of four or very close to four would suggest that they're kind of very close to the best practice. Whereas others being earlier on that journey as well.
Thanks, Amy. So I think the focus is on progression and improvement, not necessarily on presenting your best face forward. So this is about being sort of honest and critical around the works. It's evident that we've got more to do on the environment and assets across the anchors. So these screenshots are just taken from the anchors annual report that Amy mentioned. I'm just going to take you through some of the sections. That's probably quite small on the slides there. So particularly there, we've got some background content from the annual report. But also this overlaps. You'll have heard some of this before. So December 2024, you heard from Raine at the University of Leeds on the decarbonisation scheme. And you also heard from Chris Kelly at the Leeds Teaching Hospitals NHS Trust as well, talking about, again, decarbonisation and specifically the bigger projects that they're working on without necessarily understanding the broad commitment from all of the anchors and what's going on, which is what we're trying to cover today, that we then provide a way forward on the others. Just a little bit more content on the the examples that I've given from the annual report. And I'll include a link to the full annual report in the follow-up today. So we've got an updated, refreshed terms of reference. We've got a focus specifically on the climate subgroup and the linked environment and assets, Leeds Anchors Network theme. And then just a little bit more information on then the progression framework and where we think that improvement from that score of 2.8 to a higher score, that doesn't mean we would get to four within the next, within the next period. But there's definitely an ambition to progress each year and to bring all of those, all of those anchors up in that level. I think particularly on the starting point, all of the anchors reported, I think they reported to you, Amy, on their levels of emissions and their targets for Scope One and Scope Two emissions. So when we talk about climate, often focused specifically straight on CO2 emissions. Not all, and this includes the council as well, are able to report on Scope Three. And we've been dipping our toe and very much the direction of travel then is to have a shared approach to Scope Three emissions, to shared approach to the supply chain, the left hand side upstream part of Scope Three, but also that, those downstream areas, including arguably in terms of some of the travel and transport themes as well. So which we think would cover a lot of the main areas of Scope Three. I think particularly what you can see in the slides there is the commitment from Tom Cooper at the university. He's Sustainability Manager at the university and very much the climate subgroup is effectively the sustainability teams of the different institutions working together, backed up with the conversations that Amy and others are having with the corporate centres of those different organisations as well. The examples that you've got there that might be a little bit small on that slide are about sharing knowledge, joining forces, particularly using a common approach to things like Scope Three emissions. So particularly there to develop that common, shared understanding, even though in some cases the institutions don't have lots and lots in common in terms of their service delivery or in terms of their estate. Others will do. You'd imagine each of the universities will have many things in common. Same for the college group as well. And then what you can see in those other examples is around those different areas of improvement. So you've got little case studies on some of those different areas there. And particularly they might prompt other discussions that we might want to have then around decarbonisation, around energy reduction, around new building standards, biodiversity. I think touches very much on the working group meeting that you've just had as well. Green infrastructure, lots and lots of little examples there in that slide. And there's a little bit more, not much. I've taken about half of what's already in the report as well. Amy, anything to add? On that note. Okay. And I'll turn to the current shared areas of work to this start of this summer. And really it builds from that recognition that we're not all at the same starting point. It's evident in the conversations between different anchors. That not all anchors have got actions in place for baseline and reducing Scope Three emissions. And to that end, and you've seen the quote from Tom Cooper, that that's a key part of the building blocks towards the way forward there. So two working groups for 2025 established by the Climate Subgroup. We've got one on Scope Three Supply Chain. That's going to focus very much on procured goods and services. Particularly, it will be the top 300 areas of spend by each anchor. Obviously, for the larger anchors by spend, the top 300 will all be very large areas of spend for the smaller anchors. That 300th area of spend for that financial year might be a smaller area of spend. We've got a historic dataset, still need to do some data cleansing because we've still got spend on things like energy. Energy is actually a Scope Two, bought in energy is a Scope Two emission. So that needs to be removed and another one added for that anchor in that, for that financial year. For each of those, we're applying a common CO2 conversion for every pound of spend. So we'll have at that aggregate level for a financial year, a good understanding of what was procured. We will have an overall understanding of the standard industrial classification of the supplier that the institutions bought the goods or services for. And a single application of a single CO2 calculator can apply to that area of spend. It's nothing like as granular as going into the data mill and looking at every area of spend and trying to put a category on it or going into, you know, a whole menu or selection or a shopping list of areas. So it's something that's very broad and will cover quite a lot of ground quite quickly. That's a collaboration with the Climate Group and the Procurement Group as well. And what we want to do next in terms of discussions with the Procurement Group is to get future datasets so that we can build up that picture over time. I think then we would have a really good understanding of the suppliers we've got in common, of the suppliers who are providing, when we ask them, they provide much more meaningful CO2 information about what they're doing and build those questions into each of our procurements. And to work further then on, maybe on the specific areas I've highlighted there. IT, buildings, construction, food and catering there. We think they're three of the main areas where we're going to have spend in common. We're going to have local suppliers. But also where we think that by asking one more meaningful question about emissions, about what the supplier or the possible range of suppliers are doing to try and attract the next contract, what we can do then to make those questions really smart, to have those questions in common across the anchors. So while food and catering, for example, might not be the highest spend, I guarantee it isn't. There will be, there are, for example, 20 or 30 food and catering procurements in our top 300 areas of spend for the financial year that we looked at. So it's not a large number, but it's around, you know, 10% of the procurement. And that's where those questions then around emissions, we can use that then to look at, for example, shared supplier events or shared sessions then to look at. Maybe the suppliers we've got in common or the upcoming contract that are due for renewal or the upcoming procurements invitations to tend. And then the second theme to the Climate Subgroup is the travel and transport. And I've just included there, this is a Tom Cooper's request, the university's sustainable travel strategy and offering. Sorry, I like to talk about water. I'm just going to need to get a drink. And again, I think it's not the same anchors on the Scope Three Working Group. And the travel group is about five or six, the 14, so they're not all represented there. On the Scope Three, we had all three universities and the college group. So it's interesting, we're going to have a very strong focus then on providing services towards students there. On the travel and transport group, it's sort of a more diverse group. The areas that have come up, I think in terms of actions, I've got a further meeting Friday this week. Staff commuting, student travel, business travel. Understanding the differences between the starting point of the different organisations. So Leeds City Council, we will have a fleet, fleet, fleet use, Scope One emissions. Leeds City Council will have 800 or more vehicles in its fleet. Leeds Beckett University has three. Leeds Teaching Hospitals NHS Trust has zero. So if there are vehicles travelling around on behalf of that anchor, they are subcontracted, they're through a contracted relationship, they're not part of their fleet and they would be there for a business travel. So I always expected the conversation to be straight away about fleet and EV charging. It's much more basic around travel plans, travel policies, bike to work scheme or modal shift, all of those, all of those different things there. Our colleagues in the Infant Travel Behaviour already plugged in to that network as well. So Plan to Agree, further actions, really on behalf of both the Scope Three Supply Chain and the travel and transport. So we meet back and we say, look, we've got these suggestions for the next steps to take to the wider group, to all 14. And then I think we will have some outputs to share and we'll share those as soon as we can. But I'm just a bit careful about talking on behalf of other organisations. So I'm sorry if my enthusiasm goes a bit ahead there. I think you should just be careful talking on their behalf when they're not here. That might be more to do with who we invite to come to a future committee. That's the end of the presentation. No video.
Yes, please do. Thank you for making it through that, Andrew. And clearly in terms of the impact across the city, that's really, really important work. Can you just, before you get rid of the PowerPoint, go back to the slide that had the anchors on? Because I'm interested, while I bring people in for questions, in your question to us. Those of you who were at the meeting when we had Leeds Uni and the NHS here. I mean, it was fascinating work. It was really, really interesting to hear what they were doing. So as you ask questions based on the presentation, it would be good to hear from you if anybody else on that list that you can now see in front of you is somebody that you would like to invite. And, you know, we can do the same as we did with the teaching hospitals and with the uni. And we can ask them to focus on some of the work that they've done. So please feel free to ask about that as well. Okay, I think councillor Downs was first on my list.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of sort of technical questions on it. One is, you said that there were 14 members. On Leeds City Council's website information, it says there's 13 members. And the 13 members don't include people like Royal Armour, his Northern Power Grid and his Department of Health and Social, whereas it does include Yorkshire Water. So there's a discrepancy about what we're putting out as our data as to who the members are. Based on that, I think it's a shame that perhaps Yorkshire Water aren't involved and it looks like they once were and are no longer. The other question though is that it says that this was set up in 2018. So that was seven years ago. I'm just wondering what's been achieved in those last seven years? And you're talking about aspirations of projects moving forward. They're all big organisations, probably Leviathans that are taking forever to sort of do anything with. Is there any idea of when the timescale is likely to be that there's going to be some sort of results coming through from this?
I'll take the first part of that around the information. There has been a bit of change in the membership of the network over time. There is a bit of historic information on Google that keeps, that keeps coming up again on a separate page, which might have the incorrect information. The organisations that you can see there are the current members of the network, the most recent joiner. There is the Department of Health and Social Care. So we're just going through the process with them of formally becoming part of the network. We have seen some organisations that have left the network, including Yorkshire Water. This has partly been driven by the fact that they had moved their HQ outside of Leeds and lost some of the connections to the city. Although they will be coming back into Leeds again. So there is an opportunity to reopen that conversation with them.
Quickly on that point. Quickly on that point, the website I was referring to was news.lead.gov.uk, which would appear to be our news channel. So it's actually on our news channel, that was all, it might be possible to get that updated.
Yeah, I'll I'll certainly look to to get that updated. I know which webpage you're referring to, it's in our main webpage for Leeds and Connect with, but unfortunately is the one that sometimes come up.
Yeah, that's one I did when I googled searched it, yeah.
Yeah, but we'll look into that.
Then the other question was around the effectiveness of this.
Yeah, I'll I'll pick that one up, councillor. I think particularly, I did include it in one of the slides, talking about the the reduction, for example, on the climate theme, the reduction of CO two emissions. I suspect for some of that work, that is work that those institutions would have reduced anyway. And I think what we want to do through renewed focus, the new partnership agreement, stronger information sharing, and particularly extending into scope three to accelerate that that reduction, but also to make sure that we bring everybody up to the same the same level of understanding. So I don't, I don't even know if in twenty eighteen, we had all of those five themes and there was as as strong a focus on the maybe of the cross cutting between themes as there is now. Do you want to say something else, Amy?
Yeah, that's right. So what's been in place since twenty eighteen?
Do you want to turn your mic off, Anne, Andrew? Thank you.
Yeah, that that's right. So there's a structure to the anchor network with a senior executive leadership team. And that was the first group that was established. So it was it was going in from the top and about embedding that commitment within organisations. And then over time, we've developed work streams that cover those themes there. So the climate group, I think, has been going for about two years. It's one of the newer strands, but felt like a really important policy area of work for the anchors to be collaborating on. In some of the other areas that have been going for longer, so the employment group, for example, that is chaired by Andy Dodman within Leeds City Council. There's been some really good achievements that the the group has achieved collectively there, particularly things around neighbourhood recruitment initiatives and some some really kind of big collaborations around supporting people into careers in the health and care sector. So that those have been some other kind of really good successes that have come out from the network from some of those earlier days.
Thank you. Who else to have? Councillor Bromley had on my list.
Thank you, Andrew. That's really useful and yeah, good to hear what's what's actually been going on and engage on this more. In terms of listening back on who to invite, I know that we've heard from the NHS before, which just seems like such an astronomical mission to deal with the climate, especially inside of waste, where single use and how do you sort of combat the sort of the the safety and and regulations around things? So it's really good also to hear that then it's almost joining this supportive force where there's other ways that they could, you know, sort of focus in terms of people getting into work and public transport. I I would really like to hear from, there's not particularly a question more on it unless you want to answer, comment on any of that. But I just wondered if we could hear maybe from Leeds Trinity, because we often seem to hear from, but the problem is Beckett and Leeds University, but not much from Trinity. And also, I'd be really interested to hear what the British Library are doing. It sort of almost seems like the anomaly between them all, but potentially as well, just sort of you know, sort of almost able to be that sort of like collection of 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 knowledge of between between them all to sort of anchor it, not many means to put a pun on that, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any of those points you want to come back on?
I think very, very briefly, I mean, I think Leeds Trinity be really well represented over the summer in the in the different work groups. However, their sustainability manager has just gone on maternity leave, she's been absolutely brilliant. I don't know who I would contact now, I will have to find out. But maybe I want to find out anyway and see how things have gone. So that gives me an excuse to get in touch. Sorry, that that doesn't mean I don't know who we might need to contact at the British Library, but I'll talk to Tom Cooper at the at the university to find out how we how we talk to them as well.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come in on this item? Councillor Shazad and then councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. I was wondering what's reason Yorkshire Water have left our anchor programme? And what are we doing to encourage others to join? I'm sure we've got many more, like we've got First Direct Bank, they're on the arena here. What what are they actually doing? Now, is there any chance we could look at bringing some financial companies on that are big hires in the city? Halifax Bank being one of them, I like.
Yeah, absolutely. So with regards to Yorkshire Water, this was in relation to them moving their headquarters outside of Leeds. And but as I mentioned, they they are coming back into the city, so there's an opportunity to reengage that conversation with them as a major player. In terms of broadening the network out, we we do have conversations and we, some of these are quite live with other organisations in the city. And particularly now the the profile of the the network is growing since the the kind of signing of the partnership agreement. So it is open to other large organisations that want to join. Two years ago, we set up a parallel network that was more focused on the private sector in Leeds. Because we recognise that this being a primarily, but not exclusively, primarily public sector network plus those organisations that deliver public services, such as the energy distribution firms. We recognise that there's a really important role for the private sector, particularly those organisations that have very deep roots in the city that maybe been here for a long time or employ a large workforce. We haven't sort of focused this presentation on that group, but just to say that this is a network that that we are starting to grow in the city now as well. We've got ten members that are part of Leeds Business Anchors and it includes some of the financial and professional services firms. It includes some of the major engineering consultancies who obviously have, you know, a great deal of expertise around climate. And it includes digital firms as well. So that one is is getting underway in future. It might be that we bring bring these two networks as part of one of the same thing, but we wanted to allow the the testing of that model of how this works for firms that particularly are often the Leeds office of a national or global firm. So necessarily the the way that they operate as a local anchor will be a bit different.
Thank you. Did you want to come back on that, councillor Shazad? Okay, councillor Anderson.
Yeah, it's on the one of the slides you brought up, when you were pointing out that the results that you were getting under environment and assets weren't as great as you thought they could be. But to a layperson like me, what's the correlation between environment and assets? Because, I mean, I can see, you know, in other words, which is causing the problem in that heading? Because the environment, I would say that most of those companies have got a very positive reputation for doing work in the environmental side of things. However, the asset management side of things, most of them have got old buildings, which trying to retrofit would cost an absolute arm and a leg. So I, is there something hidden within that measurement? That the environment side is performing relatively well? And the negative side is because of the the stock of buildings that they've got, is that? Or am I wrong in that? Because the, as I say, as an outsider, I think all of these companies have got and businesses have got a positive reputation for environmental work. But because of the stock of properties that they own, they must be having difficulties because just look around here. How would you retrofit this building? How would you retrofit the LGI? You know, they're all, you know, they've got what we've got, we can't rebuild, knock down and rebuild from scratch. So you're almost setting them up to fail because of the the nature of the buildings that they've got.
Thank you. And yes, I think that there are quite a few different areas that are encapsulated under that environment and assets strand. And I think that although sort of Andrew's positioned this as one of the perhaps lower performing areas of the framework. I think it's important to note as well that there that has been an increase in the overall scores, as there has been across each each of those areas. Some of this is, as I've said, it's it's around the self assessment by individual organisations. So there will be variation there across the themes. But just to give you a little bit more context on what is covered within that environment and asset section. And we can certainly circulate the framework, so you've got the full level of detail on that. This is quite a wide ranging area of the framework. It looks at their adoption of policies to address the climate emergency and the setting of net zero targets, which is at the high high scoring area across the organisation. It looks at environmental management policies. It looks at the the actions that they take on energy, resource use, waste and pollution. Again, that's an area where there has been an increase in scores across the anchors. It looks at their undertaking of retrofit and obviously this this will depend on the building stock and the, you know, what what works are undertaken in any given year. We've seen with some of our anchors that they have undertaken large programmes recently. We've seen particularly with reference to Leeds Trinity, the opening of the the new city campus and sort of embedding of environmental standards in in that building. But it also looks at things like their biodiversity standards as well. And thinking quite holistically about the use of their estates for both nature and for human health and wellbeing. There's another strand of of this section as well that also looks at their their role as good neighbours, the way that they open their buildings and their estates out for community use. So that's less on the climate side, but more about the way that they deploy their the the use of their estates for wider benefit for communities in the city.
Just to add, just to add to that, I'd absolutely agree with what you said, councillor, around the I think the impossibility of looking at organisations with, I mentioned how different how different the fleets are for the different organisations, it's the same for the estates for the for these anchors as well. And I think if you if you remember back to when you heard from Lorraine and Chris, they both spent about sixty million pounds in a two or three year period. And they both focused on the five buildings that they thought would make the most difference. They've got hundreds of buildings and they were picking and choosing the the buildings overall. So overall, their 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 stock is improving, those individual buildings are improving markedly, but they've still got that long tail of those other buildings for which retrofit might be inordinately expensive because they're smaller buildings and you won't get a return. So there's a degree of self assessment there. But again, the aim is not necessarily to get to four, it's to it's to challenge each other to improve. And I think we've got that level of improvement. It's the second or third largest area of improvement in terms of that point three improvement from last time. And I draw attention to that and to encourage those organisations to share more. Certainly, when I shared shared the slides from those presentations from Lorraine and Chris, including talking about geothermal and so on. They've definitely prompted other ideas then elsewhere in the city about what else we could do differently. So it's also learning then about which projects you pick in terms of allocating your funding differently. So the net result might not be that different, but actually you think you've targeted your funding more wisely going forward.
See, personally, from afar, I would argue that the health services procurement is their Achilles' heel. They just don't seem to be able to procure things. They get they get money and plenty of it, but they don't seem to be able to use it to effectively get bang for their buck. I don't know why, I mean, I can I can speculate about that, but I've got no evidence myself on it. And that is why I felt, you know, it's fine for you to point out the negative, but I think there are other problems in some of those organisations that they may be concentrating on. First of all, and that's what's concerning me, there's nothing wrong with what you've done, by the way, not criticising that in any shape or form. It's just the health service in particular, I think, needs to look at its procurement more because they've got massive problems with that.
Thank you. I was just looking around for any more hands. Do you want to come in, councillor Afik?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a different, first of all, for organisations to kind of join the anchors network, it's not compulsory. You know, we've mentioned some of them, Yorkshire Water, but as a council, we can only use our influence. And and I think when it comes to the challenges, it is very much about sharing good practice, but challenge each other as well. But I think that's a role for all of us to play when we are in different forums to make sure that those outside organisations. You mentioned the health service, but there are many others as well. Albeit the universities, you know, we don't have a direct any, you know, influence, but we can only use where possible our our influence as a council. But I think there is a lot of good practice, there's a lot of good work going on. And you're right, you know, I think when it comes to assets and buildings, there are there are a lot of challenges. You only got to look around, you know, well, LGI and you can see the new block and the old block and they see the difference. And same as with with Jimmy's as well. So there are there are challenges, you know, and 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 I suppose the biggest challenges, you know, like the council, you know, these public institutions are subject to financial scrutiny and 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 the challenges they face, and it's not straightforward when it comes to investment in your building. So it's it's very much about, you know, stretching your kind of financial kind of person, see what you can do.
Thank you, councillor Afik. Councillor Downs.
Yeah, just a quickie, I mean, I I realise it's primarily public service, but we were talking talking about like banks and things like that. And we have got, what about things like travel, like the airport? Because I think that they have a, it would be very interesting to see if they would be able to come on board. Because the environmental impact of the airport is huge. And if they were bought into into the fold, as it were, and we were able to work with them. One of the concerns with a lot of people in my area is the environmental impact of the airport. And I just wonder if they were prepared to partner up, that might actually be a benefit to the whole community because it would really help our cause, as it were.
Yes, I think it's something that we, you know, we're we're open to any organisation that wants to be part of the anchor network. It is about their ability and their willingness to work across the framework, across each of those dimensions. But any organisation that sort of fits into that kind of being locally rooted, never going to up and leave, which would would be in a, you know, airports and sort of major transport hubs. And that is is willing to work with us and go through that process through the progression framework, we, you know, we we do have conversations with any organisation that wants to think about their local impact in in that sense.
Yeah, just last last comment on that. I think I think it would be telling to know whether they would be interested to join or not because they purport to be, you know, looking at the environment and that. But there are those that are convinced that they're not, and I think it would be an excellent opportunity for them to work with the anchor partners in Leeds to actually show that, you know, sort of like the colour of their eyes, as it were. Yeah, we are genuine and we are going to do something about it. And I wonder whether it's something that you could potentially invite them or ask them, you know, would you be prepared to join? Because it would be in your interest, as it were, if they were prepared to work with us.
I think that's a question we can take back, there's a cross cutting Leeds Anchors Network meeting where the the different colleagues in the council who attend the different meetings. So Amy and I will raise that at the next cross cutting Leeds Anchors Network meeting. I'm sure there is some more layers of governance that I probably haven't explained there about who who else we would need to talk to as well, councillor, but I'll make sure we do that.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come in on this item? Okay, can I ask you mine then? I think I had four, so. First one was when you were talking about procurement and you mentioned the fact it it might transpire that there are several suppliers in common across the anchors. I mean, I I think that could potentially be a really important piece of work to look at that and and then to be able to 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 make an assessment of 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 the emissions of their of those suppliers. So as part of the exercise, I'll get to my question, as part of the exercise, will the anchors be asking questions of those suppliers in terms of, you know, their own emissions? So that's that's the first one. Actually, the second one isn't a question, it's just it's just really a comment on on that, that oh, no, yeah, it kind of is, it kind of is a question. That you you mentioned the idea of something that is becoming more prevalent to have kind of sustainability related questions as part of procurement. prevalent, to have kind of sustainability related questions as part of procurement. And again, I think that's something that could have a really big impact on the city. So just interested in hearing a little bit more about that. The third one, you compared the different fleet layouts in terms of hours and others that tend to use subcontractors. So are they asking questions of their subcontractors? And then my last one, it seems to me that we have the potential to be collecting some really good examples of good practice. So we've got those 14 anchors, which themselves, you know, cover quite a, a, a large amount of the city's emissions as a whole, I would imagine. And then Amy, you mentioned the business anchors. I think it'd be great to have some kind of event. I don't know whether that has happened or will happen, to showcase the work that's happening across those anchors and the potential for addressing the emissions across the city. So has that, is that, will that happen, is my last question.
Okay, we've divided this up. I'm going to do one to three, and Amy's going to do four. And then I think she's going to rush for her train. I promised you, you were going to get your train. If that's okay.
You can do Amy first and then run if you want. Do you want to do that?
Yes. So just coming in on the kind of the events and the, the bringing anchors together, sharing good practice, showcasing good practice. Yes, we have started to do some of this. We've hosted a couple of joint events for the anchors and the business anchors, and for them to do some of that collaboration across organisations. We delivered a great event in the summer involving the Community Anchor Network as well, who were the kind of third strand that we think about when we think about the role of anchor institutions in the city. So those organisations that are very locally rooted, community organisations that are often closest to the voices of community. So we did an event with them in, in Slunglow in Holbeck earlier this year. That was really focused on the role of anchor organisations and working with local communities to understand community priorities. And I think there's a lot of potential for us to do more of these types of large scale events and maybe think about a climate and sustainability angle to it. And to start to kind of really raise the profile of anchor working in the city. It's something that featured within the Leeds ambitions. And now that we kind of have this, this strength of the business anchors alongside the public sector anchors and the community anchors as well, it's something that we can really start to showcase more of. And we do, we do want to be doing some of that kind of very visibly outwardly to the rest of the city, not least to encourage other organisations that they can adopt some of this practice and to share some of the learning outwards from the, the largest institutions, share some of that practice outwards in, in ways that smaller organisations and supply chains can adopt.
Thank you. So if you want to rush for your train, please feel free to do so. And Andrew can pick up the rest. Thanks ever so much, Amy, for your presentation and presence today. Really appreciate that.
And Amy answered all the hard questions that I couldn't. So really grateful, Amy. Thank you. Going back to question one, the, the anchors and particularly talking to suppliers and potential suppliers about their emissions, particularly there, but also, I think, Chair, you also asked about asking one more question or one better question. We've got some new national guidance on procurement. It fits under the theme of what, what they call social value. So this means asking questions around, in Leeds, we've tended to call it education, employment and environment. And I think particularly, my suggestion would be ask a more meaningful, clever question. I've been in a food strategy workshop where one farmer said I had to fill in 17 pages of a modern slavery statement, just to, just to get a contract to sell peas to the NHS. Please don't put me through that. So I think we just need to be mindful then of some potentially very good examples then that each of the anchors could use and reuse around that. And that might be about whether a supplier is a B Corp, whether suppliers already got a sustainability plan, whether they've already got that. Again, I'd, I'd just warn people that we focused on the 300 largest areas of spend. It's not for all 14 anchors. I think it's for seven or eight. So you're only, we're only really talking about two, two, two and a half thousand procurements or, or, or categories of spend. If we could add to that over time, I think we would have a really good understanding about the suppliers we go back to as anchors, as large institutions in Leeds, time and time and time again, and to really see each other in a way that we don't see ourselves and to see, see, see ourselves sort of from outside in. That would really, really help us, I think, particularly if you add that to a roadmap that says we've, we've sort of auto renewed this contract year after year, because we're not sure about who else is out there in the market. That's where the event, I think, comes in, in terms of, as anchors together, we can shape that market. We can actually work differently with those. So particularly, I want to get that longitudinal information over time. All of that information on spend, because they're all either all public sector or all public sector adjacent. So the college group probably isn't public sector, but it's very close to public sector. We can all use the same DEFRA CO2 calculation. So we're talking the same language. And I think it would be interesting to see who we'd got in common. I have to say, when I saw the data, just for one year, there, there were only out of those sort of 2000, out of the 300 spend by the seven, seven anchors who completed the data, there were probably only 30 or 40 where we'd got more than two anchors talking to the same supplier. But if you add that, that's just the procurements that came out that year. When you add that on year after year after year, I think we will, we will find more and more. So I'm in discussion with our procurement team to add to that. We've got a really clever person at the university who's working with us to, to put the information together. Unfortunately, now the information's held in the council, not on the anchors network SharePoint site. So I need to get that somewhere else. I've got a meeting later on to try and work out how we get that information out with the, with, with the other anchors. I think particularly using those sorts of questions around social value. So particularly asking smarter questions around environment. So particularly there, have you got a climate action plan? What, you know, you know, what, what are your, what are your deadlines? What are your ambitions? What's going on? Can we see it? Even some basic things like the standard industrial classification, that means like that, we can actually link our spend to a, an off the peg calculation then of that, of that, that pound spent being equal to CO2. That saves us lots and lots of data processing time instead of going through individual transactions. We can link all the transactions with that individual company to a single method there. In terms of fleet, particularly there, I was really, I was absolutely staggered. So I'm, I'm chairing the scope three supply chain group, and I'm attending the, the travel group, even though we've got Rachel Elliott from the influence and travel behaviour team on that, on that group as well. I was absolutely staggered at the differences between the different organisations and how far they are. I did, I wasn't aware that many of the institutions that you've got here on the anchors group do not have their own fleet, and they subcontract in those vehicles. You see with their logos on the side, it's not their fleet. It's a procured service. So getting that understanding is something that we would need to do. In the meantime, it's not a bad thing to talk about staff commuting, travel to work, the balance of working from home and how things have changed. But maybe it's not what we expected in terms of the understanding the, the emissions. So it's something that I think we've got a lot more, a lot more to go at in those areas, but maybe it's not going to touch on, not necessarily saying shared, shared EV charging or shared infrastructure. I thought it was going to touch on that. And it's, and it's so far, it's looking more straightforward about how you, how your people get to work or how your students get to, get to the right locations from where they are. But at least that develops a shared understanding then of who's, who's going where in the city.
Thank you, Andrew. I, I, I think this is fascinating work. I think it really has potential to, to give us a huge amount of data. I mean, good luck with the scope three. But, but I think it does, you know, as a, as a city, it allows us to get more of a handle on really where, where we need to, to do future work. And, and I think also the, the idea of, of getting people to be working more collaboratively and learning from each other, as well as asking the same questions, I potentially can, can really make a difference for us as a city. So thank you for that. Really appreciate that. Thank you. So that is the end of that item. So we are on item 10, which is a very long item. It is the date and time of the next meeting, which is 9:30 for a meeting in December on the 17th. So great time and date for everybody. I'm sure you're all looking forward to that. As, as always, if you have anybody who would like to come to open forum, because I thought we had a really good open forum today. I think we already have councillor Bromley, somebody for, that, that you were talking to that would like to come, and we maybe have another. So but I think we've probably got two, but if you would like to invite anybody, please do. And I would like to see as many of you as possible on the eighth for the workshop, which will be online. And what we'll be doing there is picking up those conversations that we've been having about comms and engagement. And there's been quite a lot of work going on in the background. So it'd be good to have your input on that. So thank you very much, everybody. It is at two o'clock. Thank you. Thank you very much. You are free to go.